This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et cec., notice of which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here. Oh, I hear you, bye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Here.
Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. There's no proclamations or presentations this evening. We'll go right into the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the COW and a regular meeting of October 24, 2017.
Everybody was present for that.
Everybody was present. Need a motion.
Offer.
Second, please. Need a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now I need a motion for the special COW goal-setting meeting on October 28, 2017.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay. With that, we'll go right to the city manager's report.
I'm giving the mayor and council an invited guest, city manager's report for December 5, 2017. Last night was the City of Hackensack hosted our annual tree lighting ceremony at the Green. I was able to attend. I had a previous engagement which canceled, so I was able to attend. And I would like to commend our city employees on a job well done. Department of Public Works, Recreation, Culture Arts, Fire Department, and the Police Department. I have to say, they did a really nice job. This is my second year. As far as I'm concerned, it was seamless. We had a good attendance, even though I think it was colder the first year I was here, and maybe there were a few more there, but it looked like everybody enjoyed it and people were getting in the Christmas spirit, and obviously the mayor and council were present. The city has been awarded a grant in the amount of $5,500 through 2017 Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Year and Holiday Crackdown. The grant is for police officers over time to conduct DWI checkpoints throughout the holiday season. A friendly reminder, our Recreation Department has moved to 39 Broadway while our Holt Street location is under construction. Residents can reach our Recreational Department by using the same telephone number. If you have any connection issues, please contact the Culture Arts Center for assistance. During this time period, the Culture Arts will be working at the 39 Broadway locations, so Culture Arts and Recreation and their staff will be operating out of one building, so that people aren't confused, or if they need to go there, we'll always have staff present. The other thing that the city has done is, there are banners in front of the 39 Broadway Street identifying that that's the now current home of our Recreational Department, and also there were banners installed on all three sides of the M&M property, so people are aware. Our Recreational Department will be hosting a children's holiday party on Saturday, December 9, at the H-A-C-P-A-C at 102 State Street. Please refer to the website for details, since the parties have been separated by age of your child. All are welcome. The TANIC update, the city is pleased to announce that TANIC gives the FAA the go-ahead to alternate flight plan study after advocacy from the Hackensack city officials and residents. This was spearheaded by Deputy Mayor Canastrino. I'm sure she'll make comments later. She was in attendance. FYI, the two-way conversion of Main Street will commence on December 26. In the interim, we will be painting lines and getting ready, and the entire length of State Street will be coned. I will be using the multiple signboards to advise motorists that Main Street and State Street, in this case just State Street at this point, will be converted. And the final issue is that we still have leaf bags available. The leaf process goes to December. Debbie, can you help me what that date? Do we have a defined date for final of leaf pickup? Pardon me? I think it's the 16th. I forgot to check it. But in either case, we're going to come to close. Anybody that wants leaf bags, they're still available at our DPW at 120 East Broadway Street, second floor. You're free for one bundle of 15 bags, and that would complete the city manager's report for December 5.
Right. I just have one question on the leaves. Because we've had such a mild fall, a lot of these trees are still loaded, loaded, loaded with leaves. I can't imagine, you know, today is the 5th, 11 days from now, that all these leaves are going to be down. So I think we're going to have to make concessions here.
This is the sole reason why every time somebody says, "You have to make a schedule and you have to stick to the schedule," I'm fighting a...
Mother Nature has their own mechanism, so if we had rain for the next two weeks, all
these leaves would be down. If we don't have frost and it doesn't rain, we may have leaves right up till damn near January. So we're going to have to play it by ear.
Yep.
But these are the proposed dates. We'll leave it at that.
All right, very good. Moving forward to new business, Resolution 420-17.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 35-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 88 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Fire Prevention with respect to application fees for certain permits. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay. Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 35-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Resolution 421-17.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 36-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to restrict parking on certain residential streets except for resident parking permit holders. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay. Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. This time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
Mr. Coley, I don't know if this is the right spot, but it talks about residential parking permit holders. Is there any change from charging the tax, five, or city residents, $5 for each one of those permits? And have it go down to maybe a dollar? How much can the plastic stickers cost that we have to pay $5 to park on our own streets?
Well, in actuality, it doesn't, it has nothing to do with this ordinance, Mr. Coley, but we will take that under consideration. Thank you. Anybody else in the public on this ordinance? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Need a motion to?
Need a motion to adopt?
Offer.
We didn't adopt them. We need a motion to adopt.
Did I skip the first one?
We skipped, yes.
All right. Should I do this one and then go back to that?
Yes.
Yeah, we could just go backwards. We already started.
All right, because I just realized, I forgot.
I was looking, I'm like, wait a minute.
All right, we have an intro from the deputy mayor, Canastrino, and we need a second.
Need a second to adopt?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 36-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Now, we need to backtrack to Resolution 420-17. Need a motion to adopt that ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Why don't you read the "Be it resolved" back into the record again?
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 35-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. I knew something was missing.
I usually make two checks, and I didn't, so I guess I missed it.
I actually used the wrong, when I checked it off, I used the wrong paper, too, so.
Okay, moving forward, Resolution 422-17.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 37-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to add a new handicapped parking space in Section 49.2, parking for the handicapped. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 37-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 423-17.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 38-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Employment to eliminate payments for accumulated unused sick leave upon retirement for all new hires. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion, please, to open to the public?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Need a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 38-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay. Resolution 424-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 39-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 14A of the Code of the City of Hackensack Defense and Indemnification to authorize the required form of notice of tort claim.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 39-2017 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 18, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. That was 424?
Yes.
Resolution 425-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 40-2017, a bond ordinance providing for improvements to city parks, buy-in in the City of Hackensack County, Bergen, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,350,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,285,700 in bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 40-2017 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 18, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, very good. Resolution 426-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 41-2017, a bond ordinance, amending bond ordinance number 13-2016, finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Hackensack in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, on April 4, 2016, to increase the appropriation therein for items or expenses listed in and permitted under NJSA 40A:2-20 by an amount equal to $500,000.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 41-2017 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 18, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 427-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 42-2017, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Poplar Avenue in the City of Hackensack County, Bergen, State of New Jersey.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 42-2017 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 18, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 428-17.
This is a resolution conditionally designating Sanhan Clinton Court Urban Renewal LLC as the redeveloper of the properties identified on the official tax map of the City of Hackensack as Block 408 Lots 8, 9.01, 9.02, and 11, known as the Nye Hansen, otherwise known as Ward Street redevelopment plan area.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. 429-17, please.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 43-2017, an ordinance authorizing a 15-year tax exemption for a market-rate rental apartment project with retail and parking to be constructed by Sanhan Clinton Court Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 40A:20-1 et cec.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 43-2017 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 18, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Resolution 431-17? I'm sorry, 430-17?
This is a resolution authorizing a transfer of 2017 budget appropriations.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 431-17.
This is a resolution authorizing the approval of the 2016 audit corrective plan.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 432-17.
This is a resolution awarding the contract for engineering services for Main and State Street two-way conversion project to Bright View Engineering.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 433-17.
Resolution authorizing the award of New Jersey State co-op contracts for the purchase of playground equipment from Play Power LT Farmington, Inc.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. 434-17, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the accrued time payout of $142,382.44 to Police Captain Vincent Riano.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.[1387.32]
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four thirty-five dash seventeen?
This is a resolution authorizing the accrued time payout of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents to Municipal Court Clerk Camille DiGennaro.
Need a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four thirty-
Can I just say that for the last six resolutions, you didn't offer the public any time at all? So are you just getting used to shutting us down completely or what? What's the story?
Well, protocol calls, Mr. Servo, that during a resolution, the public does not speak. The public gets a chance to speak at the adoption of an ordinance during the public comment.
Okay, so we can't say a word about anything here that you're going through? Tax exemption, payouts?
Excuse me, you're out of order. We're in the middle of the docket bringing it forward at this time. No, the public does not speak. The public speaks during public comment, all right?
But it's just-
Mr. Servo, you're out of order, please. You just can't stop the meeting right in the middle of the docket. Thank you.
All right, we were up to resolution four thirty-six dash seventeen?
Four thirty-six dash seventeen.
The resolution authorizing the release of escrow for five-twenty River Street.
The motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four thirty-seven dash seventeen?
The resolution authorizing the awarding of an emergency contract for replacement wastewater pump.
Need a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four thirty-eight dash seventeen?
The resolution authorizing tax refunds for overpayments disabled deduction and state board judgments.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four thirty-nine dash seventeen?
Resolution four thirty-nine dash seventeen is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to enter into a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program for the project titled Green Acres Project zero-two-two-three dash seventeen dash two-eight.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four forty dash seventeen?
This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hackensack authorizing the settlement of litigation entitled Heck versus the City of Hackensack et al., United States District Court, District of New Jersey, case number two colon fourteen dash CV dash zero-five-zero-seven-eight dash SDW dash MAH.
Roll call? I need a motion, please?
Offer.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Do you want me to?
Yes.
Just briefly, there is a statement from the city manager's office regarding the vote that was just taken. The city council has voted tonight to approve a negotiated settlement in the Heck case that includes absolutely no admission of wrongdoing. This is purely a financial decision that has been made to protect taxpayers from a legal system that too often encourages public employees to file costly lawsuits and puts municipalities in impossible positions. The administration spent a significant amount of time considering this settlement, which was strongly recommended by the city's legal counsel. Ultimately, the choice was made to limit the city's financial exposure to approximately four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with an additional approximately three hundred thousand dollars paid by the city's insurance carrier. Taking this case to trial in federal court would have exposed the city to up to several million dollars in legal fees, even if the jury awarded the plaintiff only a minor sum. Accepting this settlement is the most responsible decision that the city can make to protect Hackensack's taxpayers.
Thank you, sir.
And that's the only comment that the city will have on this case.
Moving forward, resolution four forty-one dash seventeen, I will recuse myself from the day of this one.
Can we have a motion?
Resolution four forty-one dash seventeen is a resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to file omitted appeals before the Bergen County Board of Taxation contesting the exempt status for certain properties owned and operated by Meridian Hackensack University Medical Center.
Can we have a motion to approve?
Offer.
Second.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus recused himself.
Ted, would you like to give a statement on that?
Yes. The City of Hackensack's statement on this matter is, "The City of Hackensack has been in negotiations with the Hackensack University Medical Center over the past several months on a host of issues. We are optimistic that a resolution will be reached that supports both the hospital's vision for its future and the city's financial needs. The City of Hackensack has filed an omitted assessment appeal appeals on the exempt properties owned by Meridian Hackensack University Medical Center. This action has been taken following the medical center's recently filing a tax appeal against the city without notice of Hackensack's second-largest taxable property. The filing of the omitted assessment appeals by the city is a proactive measure for the citizens of Hackensack, but our ultimate goal is to reach an agreement that is fair and equitable to both the residents of Hackensack and Hackensack University Medical Center." End of statement.
Thank you, Ted. Will Johnny can come back?
Yes.
And resolution four forty-two dash seventeen?
Resolution four forty-two dash seventeen is a resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Need a motion to pay the bills, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims. Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, anybody here have a conflict with, it's only four items in there tonight. Anybody have a conflict?
No.
Seeing none, please continue with the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be retuned in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of resolutions number four forty-three dash seventeen through four forty-six dash seventeen. Four forty-three dash seventeen is a resolution authorizing refunds for the Hackensack Building Department. Resolution four forty-four dash seventeen is a resolution authorizing proposed Bergen County Community Development Grants for two thousand and eighteen. Resolution four forty-five is resolution authorizing a person-to-person and place-to-place liquor license transfer of Hackensack Wines, Inc. to Welcome California Market, Inc. And resolution four forty-six dash seventeen is a resolution authorizing the appointment of James Mangan as coa trust fund reporter for the City of Hackensack.
Have a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, thank you. With that, I need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay. Members of the public, anybody who'd like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. You have three minutes.
Richard Salkin, Hackensack, New Jersey. Much as it's tempting, you know, it said the road to hell is paved with good intentions, maybe poor legal advice, too. I was watching the video of your October tenth council meeting. Chris Cooley, who's in attendance here tonight, asked if you were preparing and had the resources, both equipment, personnel, I'll throw in tipping fees allocated, to accommodate the, I guess now, twenty-five-hundred, we up there? Residential units you've created with the redevelopment. Mr. LaBrus, you merely said, and I'm quoting, "No, if they don't pick up their own garbage, they don't get their building put up. It's that simple." Well, guess what else is that simple, Mr. LaBrus? That's illegal. You can't do that. The case law for seventy-five years in this state, appellate division, Supreme Court says you can't. You can't discriminate like that. If you take a step back and look at what you've created with the redevelopment, you've essentially replicated Prospect Avenue. Do you think you have the equipment, the personnel, or the money in your budget to accommodate that kind of an increase? I don't know what you're gonna do. This is a real problem. And I think frankly, I recall another incident, we were discussing how the ambulance services got to the medical center after the modification of the old developers' agreement and the legal advice you got was, well, that's what everybody else does. And if that's the advice you got this time, when I'm sure you or Mrs. Canestrino raised it to whomever, if that's the advice you got, you got poor advice, and I hope their malpractice has paid up because we're in for a major, major hit here. I don't know what you're gonna do going forward, but you've got a problem. I would ask you, if you, you know, you look skeptically on anything I say because of politics, ask Mr. Kleinman to research. He, I could give him the cases. He knows them better than I do. You can't do this. You have to accommodate everyone in the same manner. Please take it seriously. I don't want to have to keep coming back here, but I'd like to know that you're looking into it and you're trying to accommodate it, react to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Mrs. Salvo. If you're gonna speak out of turn all night long, I'm gonna have to remove you now, all right? Wait for your three minutes, please. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, hello, my name is Cecilia Diaz. Maybe I speak, I don't speak a lot of English, but maybe you understand. I'm the Elvin Mody. The two thousand fifteen twenty-second, the police go to my house and carry my son from me. And I'm here because I don't feel good. I waiting almost three year, waiting for that guy, not you, because I know some people is here new. Before, the people are new here, the other one, but and you too, nobody go to my house and God told me, you need a help, you okay? Not one people the city. Almost I had twenty year here. I had two year, you two year. And I work with my son to pay the tax for my house all year. And the police go to my house and carry my son from me and not one, the city council, all the one the city not go to my house, one second and tell me, you okay? Something. And you, I wanna ask you now, why long time, almost three year, nobody, the city go to my house and say, you okay, what happened or something? Nobody.
This, I beg the difference. I went by your house once when they had a vigil, vigil out in that park and I give you my condolences.
You never say it to me, I-
I said it to you. One time.
One time?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I never, I never see, then the second year, I doing something because I stay for all my year, all the year, I stay live here and I stay live, not for nobody here. I stay live right now because I'm politically, that's the one he go doing the justice, okay? That's the one. And that day, like the police go to my house like crazy, Miguel Molina, and I had like two testigo, see how Miguel go to my house, ask for me. He not ask for the job, he not doing the job he had to doing. That's right, so man. And he, and he throw eleven shot to my son from me. You think he doing the job? Right now, you believe, Jesus, you believe how the justice is, he have to be in the jail now because everybody know, I know a lot of police, I know a lot of police, you know, see the New York and everybody say, he not right, he not doing the job he had to doing, he not doing the job. But that day, I know hundred percent has to be die that day because he ask for me, he looking for me. That's right, he not go to doing the job and like he go so mad to my house, that's not the job the police doing. And I believe the police, I believe all the guy the city because I work hard for the city too. I work for the pay the tax all year and I believe the police before and now and in the future, I trust the police.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up, but if you'd like to speak with me after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to sit with you, all right? And I'll explain some of my feelings on this situation face to face, but now isn't the right time to do this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Stephen Madero. I'm the treasurer of the Main Street Business Alliance. I've been a board member for ten years. I've been on the alliance for fourteen years. I've also been a property and business owner for thirty-two years in Hackensack. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Business Alliance regarding some statements that were made at the last council meeting by Lisa Discrelli from TNT Theater Group. She made it at the last council meeting. At that meeting, Mrs. Discrelli put forth a question which alluded to the fact, or not to the fact, but alluded to the City of Hackensack's council giving the Main Street Business Alliance fifty thousand dollars to open the new Performing Arts Center in the Bergen Pack the House. It is my obligation as the treasurer to respond to that false statement with the truth. The Hackensack Business Alliance is a one-hundred percent self-funded organization run by business owners and property owners. Our funds come from an additional assessment we impose on ourselves. We then collect that money and we use those funds to pay for programs, to pay for street improvements, and to pay for the festivals that have been put on. The Hackensack Business Alliance has never received any funds from the City of Hackensack's tax base, from the City of Hackensack's grants that they receive, or any other means of monies that the Hackensack government receives. We have not received one dollar. Finally, back to Mrs. Discrelli's statement, which is one-hundred percent false. We, the Hackensack Business Alliance, actually partnered with the City of Hackensack in opening the Performing Arts Center by giving our own funds in, and we were glad to do it. We were glad to do it to partner with the City of Hackensack and improving the downtown and, in fact, the entire city of Hackensack. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Next, please.
Just me, Chris Cooley. I did some research on the performing arts. At the gala fair, for us, the gala fair, which does local taxpayers, is just a grand opening. The place was packed. It's a two-hundred-and-twenty-four seater. At forty dollars a ticket, you made eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty. And according to your own findings, the break-even point is twelve thousand dollars. So we lost money. Now we're selling tickets at ten dollars apiece, the grand total of two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. A loss of ten thousand dollars for every single performance. Now also in the article, it says they're gonna close off Atlantic Street, the park, the art center for all-day festivals. Atlantic Street is one of the three major thoroughfares that go up and down. How can you close it off for the whole day? It's bad enough you close off one side of the road illegally and have, I almost got killed over there. But that's another story. Another question I have is you put up a lot of parking on State Street, which I think is great. No meters. So we're gonna take as many meters off Main Street to equalize the free. And my last thing I had was, oh, no, it was about Teaneck. Art Chamber of Commerce does not do it, but that's what Teaneck does with its stores to get people to go down there and shop. Free parking, which I recommended before, and all the stores donate money to a discount to the tax, to the city, to the people that shop there to bring them in. We don't do that. Now, the other thing I saw in the newspaper that I think the City of Hackensack should look into, Teterboro is gonna expand its area and cover up the wetlands. We use our big drain from Newman Street, or basically all our drains, go to that area, the drain. Where's that water gonna go now if that's all paved? And the secondary question is, what do they plan to do with all that new land? I hope it is not putting in more landing strips and takeoff areas. I think we have enough traffic going over our houses now. Last night, the plane came over my house and I could wave to the pilot. And like I told him years ago, one time I was on the roof and the pilot actually tilted his wings to acknowledge that I waved to him. That's how close he was, and I'm an eight-story building. I can't imagine being on top of a twenty-five-story building. Must look like he's gonna go through your roof.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley.
Okay.
I just want to respond to some comments made there. There will be meters on State Street. It just hasn't happened yet. Okay? The Teterboro wetland situation, we will look into. And some tickets were sixty and some were forty, but the truth of the matter is, we weren't planning on making profit on this. Nor do we plan on, let me ask you a simple question. You ever been to a youth baseball game down at Fishy Park?
Yeah.
How much money does the city make off of it? Excuse me, Mrs. Salvo. My point being, that property, if you sold that property, would be worth well more than eight million dollars. These are recreational and cultural arts things that are necessary for the citizens, all right? It's done across the nation. It's done across the world, all right? If we were to do this as a money-making proposition, we would have done this completely, completely different. And that doesn't say we're not gonna try to defer the cost of these programs. That's, absolutely, we'll try to defer the cost of the programs. And it's someday, if we could sustain the building just with the programs, that's what, that would be wonderful. And that's our long-term goal. But we knew going in that this first show was not gonna be a moneymaker. You mentioned ten dollars a ticket. The next man that's coming up to speak has done a wonderful job. He sold out that show at ten dollars a ticket for Hamilton's in January? In January. So you're gonna have two-hundred-and-twenty-five people in these seats, all right? And some may be Hackensack residents and some may not be. You know what? That's a good thing. We want people coming from other towns to our city to see what's going on. It's a part of growing the city. It's very, very important. And, you know, to be narrow-minded and say, you know, oh, it's a waste of time. It's not making money. It's not just about the money here. It's about the arts and getting the arts out there and promoting the arts. Thank you. Next, please.
Cassine Gaines, three-seventy-three D Wolf Place. I'm gonna be very brief. I suppose today is a day for mathematical fact-checking, and I just wanted to respond to Mr. Cooley's comment. He was reading off of something. I'm not sure what it was, but he mentioned the ten-dollar tickets for Hamilton's. The city is contributing sixty, six-zero, dollars into that production. So at two-hundred-and-sixteen seats, at ten dollars a ticket, the city is actually profiting quite significantly from that production. I'm glad to say. So I'm not sure where those numbers are. The ten-thousand-dollar loss has nothing to do with Hamilton's. And I'm not sure what he's reading off of. I would love for him to let me know afterwards. I'll be around. But I'm very happy to say that Hamilton's is sold out. So thank, I know, Mayor LaBrus, you purchase tickets, so thank you for doing that. And again, just a reminder, I think it's a great, a great testament to what can happen when you have low-price community theater with local artists doing things that are of high interest to the community. Those are two-hundred-and-sixteen people that are gonna be on Main Street on a Tuesday night and have the opportunity to go and be wonderful patrons of the city. So thank you, and hopefully the math gets right next time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, please.
Good evening, Paul Nichols. Something came to mind. I was wondering, you know, you all may be heard of the HART program, H-A-R-T, Heroin Addiction Recovery Team.
Mm-hmm.
I was wondering, I had, I had sent a couple emails to Captain Aquila and spoke to Tina, Lieutenant Capodonico. Have you guys reached out to the prosecutor at all, do you know? I'm thinking about something.
We've, we've had this discussion. It was brought up by Regina on two occasions already. This is a trial basis and these police departments were selected. So the City of Hackensack Police Department is aware of it. Obviously, if they open this up, we certainly are interested in it. I think Regina made some valid points, but at this point, we can't superimpose ourself. It's up to the prosecutor's office to allow it and the police department to follow through when that commences. But we have this information and I think it's a worthwhile cause for obvious reasons, but I just can't superimpose that on bequest.
Right. Because I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of ways, you know, to be creative with it. With the, and a lot of, you know, a lot of the towns that, Mawaw, Lynnhurst, and Paramus that do have it, people from anywhere can go there, too. So even if a town didn't wanna, you know, or couldn't do it, like you're saying, because it's, some are grants, like Mawaw, so Municipal Alliance, Lynnhurst, I'm not sure, to be honest with you. But, you know, people can be going over there to Paramus or Lynnhurst or Mawaw as well. It's just getting people to those locations because sometimes it's easier to go into, I know a couple organizations that I, I actually sent- I know a couple organizations that I, I actually sent cc'd emails to with Captain Aquila. Because I think it's, you know, heroin, it's not only for heroin, it's for really any addiction. And there's, there's a lot of stuff, you know, as a problem right now. So I guess, uh, you know, um, I know, I don't know, I lost my train of thought. I'm really tired. But I think we also need to do something, you know, more in the schools to, with, um, about promoting awareness and stuff on drugs and all that kind of stuff. So if I don't see ya, have a nice Christmas. Thank you.
Same to you, Paul. It's good seeing you. Next, please.
Rich Serbo, forty-six Spring Valley Ave. I'd like to welcome the public here also, because there's less and less involvement. So the public on video, I hope hear my call to get involved, because we're, we're hearing government and council people, just, they're doing what they want, okay? And the public is no longer involved. Okay, let me start with, memory is, is the mother of all wisdom. And it's from Eschelus, Prometheus Bound. And my memory tells me that there's a lot of unanswered questions, you haven't answered questions. We wanna go back, and we're not gonna forget things that are just sort of passed over, pushed aside, so you can move on with your agenda, okay? So let's, let's start with, and I'll start quickly with what was said here by, by Mr. Cooley and you saying that it's, oh, it's all about the arts, and it's not about making money. It's all about the arts, and it's all about praise for you and your council. That's what it's all about. And that place will lose money every, every, every night, okay? Every night, there's a performance. Who's gonna pay it, is my question. You need to answer that, John. Who's gonna pay for the losses there? If you're just getting praise, don't say it's just about the arts. It's praise for you because it's the Hackensack Performing Arts Center, okay? All right, a couple other things. The hospital, you refuse to, to address the medical deaths at the hospital. They need to be forthcoming about that. It's a problem. It's our medical center. It's on, it's in Hackensack. You're the mayor of Hackensack, and you need to bring that up. With the Board of Governors there, there's, there's many, many medical mistakes and deaths. Now, they, they love being praised for all their health care, so why not let them answer for the mistakes being made there and, and people that are passing away as we speak, and it's just swept under the rug, okay? It's, it's, it's a problem. Now, with the, with the coming, the coming marijuana legalization, I, I'm hearing that it's going to be left to each individual municipality. That's gonna be madness. Now, I, I encourage you to, of course, make sure you get behind legalization of it, because it'll be silly if you, hey, we can go to Lodi and smoke a joint, but we can't smoke one here? I mean, this is, this is nonsense. It's silly. Legalization should be sort of widespread.
Three minutes is up, sir. Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Carolyn Hayer. I live at 191 Burdane Place in Hackensack. I'm here tonight to speak to you about an issue that I know you've heard about already. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. And the issue is regarding a resolution identifying Hackensack as a safe and welcoming community. I'm very proud of the fact that Hackensack is a city that is unique in our diversity, and I find that it's our diversity that is one of our greatest strengths. However, some members of our, of our community are under attack, an attack that we must stand up to. There is a climate of hate in our country right now that cannot be ignored. And as Martin Luther King said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Immigrants in this country live in fear on a daily basis. We need policies that will protect all of our citizens, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or any other category. By becoming a fair and welcoming community, Hackensack can establish policies that address the relationship between ICE and the police, and that will let our neighbors and friends know that we live in a community that supports them and their families. I work at a nonprofit as a project director that supports families, especially immigrant and underserved families, around issues related to education and health. In my work, I hear stories every single day of the challenges that immigrant families are facing just to access the educational and health services that they, and particularly, particularly their children are entitled to. Stories of families who have children with disabilities who wonder who will care for their child if they are deported. Stories of parents who are afraid to take their children to school because ICE is standing on the corner a block away from the school. I hear stories of children who cannot access needed medical care because their parents are afraid to take them to the hospital. I believe this is unacceptable and that we're better than this. The most important thing that we can do right now is to open the lines of communication and to start a dialogue about how we can best support our community. I'm here to ask if you will please consider scheduling a meeting within the next month to discuss these issues with the community. I'd like to close with more words from the great Dr. Martin Luther King. The time is always right to do what's right. Passing a resolution to make Hackensack a fair and welcoming community is the right thing to do, and the time to do it is right now. Thank you for your time.
Good timing. Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Next, please. Good evening. How are you?
My name is Ada Torres Wright, and I live at 144 Elm Avenue in Hackensack. I had a speech, three-minute speech written, but I left it, so I'm gonna wing it.
You'll do good.
I'm actually here to support the city council's resolution for a fair and welcoming community. As many of you know, I am, oh, absolutely. I'm sorry. As many of you know, is that all right? Better? I am an immigration lawyer. I practice here in Hackensack. And I can tell you stories of my clients who are here, with permission legally, who are afraid, very, very much afraid for themselves, for their family. But you know what? I'm not gonna tell you about that, because you've heard a little bit, and you know people who live in the community. You know all these stories. I'm here to tell you that Hackensack is a great community, and you know that. And we have the best restaurants. You know why? Because we are diverse. We're a diverse community, and diversity brings good food. Puerto Rican. I grew up in New York City. I've been around good food all my life. And living somewhere that doesn't have great restaurants, I don't think I'd be able to do that. My daughter is actually studying way upstate, about an hour away from Canada, and the choice of food there is really depressing. They have a choice of Taco Hell. They have, you know, McDonald's, a chain restaurant, and it's just sad. But that's what makes our city so great. The diversity here, the people, the food, and letting people know that, that we welcome them, that hate doesn't have a home here in Hackensack is really all that we're asking, because frankly, the laws are gonna be enforced. If the police have warrants, they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, enforce them. That's, we're not looking for that. We wanna let people know that we love our community, we love our neighbors, and everyone is welcome. So please, we encourage you to meet with us and discuss a policy.
Ada's spoken before. We were just waiting to set this meeting up. I guess we need to hit a move on, but...
Got my number?
Yep.
All right. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Me, too.
Go ahead, Jake.
Jason Soam, 151 Prospect Avenue. First, I'd like to start off with the Christmas tree lighting. The city, you guys did a phenomenal job with the Christmas tree lighting. There were tons of people out there. It was absolutely wonderful. It was great to see all the families out there. And I want to especially give kudos to Lauren and Patrice, the two executive directors of the Chamber of Commerce and the Main Street Alliance. This year, they raised a lot of sponsorship money that offset some of the costs of that, so they, they did a terrific job. Recently, on another topic, recently, I was appointed to the Community Block Grant Board at the county. So all the, all the money that's given to the city of Hackensack, a lot of it goes into the paving of the streets. So we went on a tour, and our own redevelopment director, Albert Dibb, gave that tour. And on that tour, he took us down Main Street and showed all the redevelopment that's going on. And I gotta tell you, he did a phenomenal job. You should put him in charge of recruiting, because he did a great job, and I think he'd bring some good businesses in. So kudos to him as well. Lastly, I'd like to ask the council to support the fair and welcoming community as well. And to kind of piggyback off of what Ada was just talking about, from a law enforcement perspective, you know, we are, we're a growing city, and, and, you know, we're down a little bit in numbers right now. And our patrolmen do a great job picking up the slack. Our police department is fantastic. However, you know, for the fact, to allow that, all that is asking for is to ask the federal government to not come in and say, "We're not in support of them using our police officers who are paid with our tax dollars to enforce their regulations." I think it's a win-win for kind of everybody. This is, this is, this goes beyond partisan politics. And, you know, I, I ask you to support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Next, please. Hello, Mr. Kirsch. How are you?
Very well. Dan Kirsch, Colonial Terrace in Hackensack. And I'm here also on behalf of the Fair and Welcoming Communities Act that Hackensack really should be part of. As having spent many years as a student in Hackensack, as a parent of students in Hackensack, and as a board member, I know, even though we don't know officially, that there are a lot of people who went through our city schools, who played ball for us, participate in our drama, who may not have had all the i's dotted and the t's crossed on all the paperwork that maybe they should have had. And they brought honor to our city. They represented us well. It's time for us to turn around and do the right thing for them and for all the others by making sure that they don't have to go into the shadows or live in the shadows, that they should be able to come and walk the streets of Hackensack the same as you do and I do and all the other immigrant families whose names are on the plaques on every one of our schools. If you go down to Jackson Avenue, you look at the walls there, you see all the different nationalities represented. You look at the high school, you look at the names on the, on the walls there, you see the same thing. And I can pretty much guarantee, I don't know it, but I can guarantee it anyway, that not all of those people had the papers that they needed or had somebody in their family that didn't have papers when they came here. They did honor to the city. We need to reciprocate and be fair and welcoming to those who are here with us now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch.
Hi. I'm Dr. Joseph Schuman, 94 Burn Street in Hackensack. I've been, thanks for the opportunity. I've been a resident of Hackensack since 1976. I'm happy to say that my six children are graduates of the Hackensack schools and have gone on to be extremely successful professionals. I'm very proud to be a Hackensack resident. The city has served me and my late wife and my children very, very well. I'm also the, since 1974, the leader of the Ethical Culture Society in TNEC, and I'm a professor of human rights at Columbia University, teaching in the graduate school, and the founder of a nonprofit organization that works with political asylum seekers and refugees. And what I want to do is, I want to add my name to the growing list of people who are urging you, who are urging you to support a resolution to declare Hackensack a fair and welcoming community, not merely as a rhetorical resolution, but something that will have real substance, the center of which would prohibit our police force from cooperating with the immigration services in terms of seizing immigrants, basically, from their homes and from schools, having them arrested, incarcerated, and then perhaps ultimately deported. And I have a personal stake in this, and I know it sounds a little histrionic. I come from a Jewish background, and there are relatives in my family whom I never met. My grandparents had brothers and sisters in Poland during the war who were picked up and seized by the Gestapo in Poland and put on transports and brought to concentration camps and walked into gas chambers. I am not making a false equivalence in terms of substance, but there is an ugly parallelism between what went on then and what is going on now here in terms of having a large, vulnerable population that lives in fear. Forty percent of Hackensack are immigrants, and as was testified before, many of these people are now in a state of fear in terms of leaving the home, having their kids go to school, going for, to doctors, going to court where they're mandated to be because their fear is the immigration services is, are going to seize them and ultimately deport them, separate parents from children, and so on and so forth. It is very ugly. I don't expect a municipal body to be a moral agent. But what I do insist on is that individual council persons be moral agents. This is a, beyond the politics, and we shouldn't see this as a political issue. It's paradigmatically a moral issue, and I would implore all of you to do the right thing and not have complicity in, in an event that is very ugly and very evil. But let us be proud of Hackensack and to make this substantive, as was mentioned before, we have a growing list of organizers who are concerned about this. We want to meet with you. We want to meet with the city manager, not in, you know, a half a year from now or a year from now, or have this tabled into eternity, but to meet in the short order to talk substantively about the seven-point plan for a fair and welcoming city, and beyond that, have you do the right thing. Thanks so very much.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Before, just one second.
Just for a second, this council is a hundred percent supportive of this. The city manager, unfortunately, because of timing, because there are a lot of issues that I face, I just haven't had the time to get this done. But I may, let me finish, because nobody interrupts. The issue is, the Hackensack Police Department are not involved in any of these issues. I've had this conversation with Captain Aquila. These officers are doing the right thing every day. I understand the fear factor of residents, especially people that are undocumented here. No one's saying that we're not gonna do this. It's just a question of finding the time to do it right. We had a meeting immediately when DACA became an issue. This mayor and council is committed to this. This is a very diverse community. All I just have to ask you is that there has to be enough time to provide for this. We had some staffing issues here. I've tried to run this city with the secretary for four months by myself. I, I, two weeks ago, I put ninety hours in here. It's not a question that we're trying to put people off. There just has to be some sensibility that there is a time marching, and there's many issues that have come through this. I know that you're standing there with that grin on your face to say...
That argument can always be invoked, sir. With all respect, this is an issue of high moral content and with a sense of urgency. You can read the newspapers today and see the number of arrests of immigrants that have gone up.
Knowing Hackensack.
There are people in fear of a taxpayer. I'm imploring you to find the time.
And I'm gonna respond by saying those arrests are not being made in the city of Hackensack. So the day that those come in here, then you have complete right to come in here and say, "I told you so." But that hasn't happened. We'll adjust this, and I will try to make the time to make this work. But unfortunately, you folks just seem to think that the only issue that I face on a steady basis, because all of this information comes to the city manager and then is fed to the council. These people are committed to make this work. You just gotta give us a little room to breathe here to get this done. I know you don't want to hear that, but that's, that's, that's an honest, responsive answer, sir.
Fine. I'm glad you're being honest. You have your duty. I have mine as a citizen. And it's a moral call, a moral imperative.
I get it.
Deal with this, I feel, sooner, not later, and not to put it at the bottom of the queue, okay?
Point taken.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, please. Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of a resident that cannot be here today because he's in medical treatment. His name is Abel Gonzalez, and he's a citizen of Hackensack for many years. He resides at 417 Main Street, Hackensack, New Jersey. My name is Diana Bermudez, and I'm one of the friends that is coming together as a community with the family and the school community in Hackensack to have a gala this Thursday night at Fiesta to help Abel with paying for his medical surgery. He needs a kidney transplant. His kidneys stopped working last year, and he's been on dialysis every day for nine hours. He's battling, and he works two jobs to make ends meet. And at the moment, he needs all the support he can get. If you would like to... If you would like to buy tickets, you can see Mr. Sims, who's been very supportive in helping us spread the word at the school community and the community at large, and, or you can see me at the high school, I'm there tomorrow until 3:00, and that's basically what I am here for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kathleen Savo, 47 Lode Street, Hackensack. Tree, tree lighting, tree is beautiful, I passed it a couple of times, it's, they're out there themselves. I'm here for an immediate cause too. I'm all for the immigrants, we have wonderful immigrants in Hackensack. Grandparents were immigrants, I don't know if they were documented or not, whatever, but it's beside the point. I'm here for the immediate attention for, for our kids now. We have a really major problem at M&amp;M. I think there was either a program going on this afternoon tonight for a Christmas program, they were parked on the sidewalk, not on the corner, on the crosswalks, and it's a mess. I'm also here to get silk screening put on a fence, because you, you guys love to keep that fence up for, on Bridge Street and Main Street for the last three years for no reason. Tuesday, we had dirt all over the place, the kids were eating it, tasting it. The dirt pile is 10 feet high, four feet higher than the chain link fence that the dirt was going through. I put three calls to the city manager, one call to the building department, no results. I called the Department of Environmental Protection, they called the Bergen County Health Department, they went down there on Friday, and they made them cover it with a tarp. It's, nobody's monitoring this, these are our kids, they're from where John is to where I am, with a 10-foot thing of dirt blowing in their faces, all over the place, with no silk screen. And it's ironic that you guys kept that working fence on Main and Bridge Street for three years with no reason at all, because you guys love to have construction fences. This whole thing was handled terribly, there was no pre-construction meetings, there was no place for, no parking for people to go, there was no parking for the teachers, people want to know what's going to happen when it snows. He took 70 parking spaces away in various places, and he gave us 24 in place. People are leaving, they can't go to church because there's no place to park. There was a funeral the other day, they called, they closed two blocks for an entire hour until the funeral was finished. If we had to get a truck there, if there was a fire in that school, forget about it. They could not get, they could not get a truck there. They also forgot, they didn't have any pre-construction meeting with the superintendent, she had one scheduled for the, sometime on the 20th, and they closed the site on the 12th or the 13th. So, they called me for Saturday to find out where we're going to put these kids for an emergency facility, in case they have to evacuate the building. I gave them Father Lafler's name, and they're going to go over to St. Anthony's Church if we have to evacuate his building for any X, Y, Z reasons, where he has accommodations for 100 upstairs and probably 200 downstairs, because the enrollment is over 300. All these things were done without a plan. I never saw trees come down so fast, not even a forest fire would take them down, 12 trees came tumbling down. In the meantime, Mr. Sawkin, we don't even have garbage trucks, our garbage truck is being shipped from Cuba, we still didn't get that. We don't have a building department, we sold that. We don't have recycling, we have stores, we have salt stored illegally, but yet, this M&amp;M building took priority over everything, and it's going crazy. David, I wish you'd come down and direct some traffic, because it's crazy down there, somebody's going to get hurt.
Ms. Savo, your mind's up, but I'm going to let the city manager, if he would like, respond to some of the accusations you made.
Accusations, no, these were facts.
Well, I know one, we still have a building department, you said we didn't have one, so I don't know how that happened.
We have a building department.
It's functional building department, I called him and nothing was done.
That's a pretty broad statement.
It's not.
Okay, the building department-
Excuse me, Ted.
They did nothing, that's the problem.
Ted. Ms. Savo, you can take a seat, we're not going to go back and forth.
No, 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 because this is what, this is what happens, and you make false statements when I sit down.
Not going to do back, Mrs. Savo, read my lips, we're not going to go back and forth, okay? If you wanted a response, we'd be more than happy to give you one. If not, forget it. Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak?
No.
No, because you're not going to speak quiet, so, there's your answer. No, we have answers, just not going to do it while you're talking back. Thank you. Motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Take it.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. All right. Mrs. Von Rudenberg.
Good evening. Mr. Coley?
Aye.
I think we could look into the $5 sticker for the cars, and we could do some work on that and see what could be done. And then if I could see what you had for the shopping event, let me know, maybe we could look into something like that eventually. The alternate flight patterns, a big thank you to Deputy Mayor Canestrino, she put a lot of time, a lot of effort into that, that was a big uphill battle, but she did it, and it's a big win for the city, and we should be really proud of her. Congratulations to Mr. Gaines on Hambletoons, that's, you know, an exciting thing, and I think it's gonna, like you said, bring a lot of people to downtown, and everyone will be able to see the pack, and you should be really proud of yourself, or we're proud of you for all your hard work. And the tree lighting was great, big turnout, they had hot chocolate, popcorn, cookies for the kids, they had trolley rides, Santa, it was just a great time, it was a big, big turnout, everything went great, the tree looks great, and everyone get home safely tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. I'll echo, and the weather really cooperated on the tree lighting. I mean, last night was a gorgeous night, and I think, you know, the crowd testified to that by the number of folks and smiling faces on the little ones, and the countdown is always spectacular, you know, when all those lights go on, you know, the DPW and all the workers out there, Recreation Department, everybody that puts this together, again, a lot of thanks going out to them, because it was a wonderful, wonderful event, and for all the people that contributed. Again, I know, you know, the Alliance, the Chamber of Commerce, and many, many, many of the businesses and folks in town that supported and contributed to this, you know, to help the city continue to provide these kind of things for our residents, and we really, really appreciate, you know, McDonald's, Starbucks, Stop &amp; Shop, everybody that contributed to food and popcorn, and really put a lot of smiles on a lot of little ones' faces. About the FAA, we had a special meeting a week ago. Definitely, I want to thank all of our residents and our condo co-op board, our people on our second ward, folks, folks that came out, you know, we asked for your support, and you gave it 100%, and that just shows about what Hackensack and what our community is all about. I asked for pictures, I asked for phone calls, I mean, I heard from Teterboro, wow, we've never seen as many phone calls coming from Hackensack about low-flying planes. People sent videos, you know, it was everyone rallying together for a cause, for a cause. It's really a, not only a safety, but a quality of life issue here, and has been for our residents for a very, very, very long time. So, yeah, I put a lot of time and effort into this and went to a lot of meetings, but we all did it together. You know, we all had the support, and we had the turnout, and we had the community coming together to support this. Just so everybody knows where we are with this, a meeting prior to that, we've been working very closely with the FAA on coming up with an alternate flight path that used navigation aid, so it would be a much better path than the flight test, which was unsuccessful last year. And when they presented that at the last meeting, they said, "The next step is for this TANEC group," this is the Teterboro Airport Noise Abatement Committee, "had to refer it back to the FAA for them to continue." And they had to do so by March of 2018. I asked the meeting, the members of the TANEC, of which I represent the city on, if we could have a special meeting to not hold it up until March, and they complied, we had the meeting a week or so ago, and I, I, they say it was a unanimous vote of everyone I could see raising their hands around the room. I did, you know, make a plea for the City of Hackensack, and I think it was well received. So, the FAA is going to continue with that study, they do have to do an environmental study, just so folks understand, you know, they have to look at all the impact analysis. We're taking the flight, existing flight pan, moving it west, so it will be closely following Route 17, but of course, you're going to see some commercial properties where the planes will be flying over at a much lower elevation than what we're used to on Prospect, and there may be some residences, residential communities involved here too. So, that's part of the process, which will take about, about 18 months to accomplish. But this was wonderful news for the City of Hackensack and for all of its residents. Chris brought up, or somebody, I think it was you, Chris, that brought up about the expansion. I don't know a lot about it, I do know that, of course, there has to be concern whenever you're building over wetlands, and I think the good, the good news there is that, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers is, is involved in this, and they're doing their studies and they're doing their homework, and I think that, I'm putting my faith in them. You know, they know, they're the experts, and they're evaluating this, and they're reporting back on what the impacts will be, and whether this is even a realistic or feasible solution. So, yes, we will continue to discuss this and stay on top of it. I have been privy to some of the plans, know they're not adding another runway, they're adding larger hangars, not for larger planes, but for existing larger planes that are there that are now, when they're doing mechanical repairs, because the existing hangars aren't large enough to house them. These are being done out in the open with, with engines running and contributing to pollution, et cetera. So, their plans are primarily for a couple of larger hangars, some more office space, not, not an additional runway, but we'll keep tabs on it, and we'll see where that goes. On the DACA tonight was, from redevelopment standpoint, was the Ward Street project. You can put your, you know, envision this, you're looking at Main Street and Ward Street, so you're looking at that corner going all the way towards Passaic Street, not including the Federal Credit Union on that corner, and wrapping around the back, so we're looking at a nice redevelopment project going in there, which is a key location in the city, so that's always exciting news. I want to thank the Alliance representatives for coming here tonight, and for their treasurer for speaking. Both the mayor and I did respond at the last meeting, meeting to the folks that did say that the city gave $50,000 to the Alliance for events at the Performing Arts Center, and we did tell them in no uncertain terms that that's absolutely not true, that there was no way, that there was any monies given to the Alliance. In fact, the Alliance contributed a good share of money to help make that night very, very successful. And looking at the Cultural Arts Center, yes, I agree with the mayor, we are supporting the arts in the city, and we think it's very important to continue to do so, we always did. I mean, we had a smaller venue on 39 Broadway, but the arts were always important to the city. And as the city grows, the arts become even more important. And, yeah, we have a long-term goal of have that building be self-sustaining, and that's our goal, that we're going to continue to try and get there. And we are, we do have a small, but a fee structure in place, a change over the past, and, you know, as Mr. Gaines said, he's already sold out his, his, his entire show, and we hope to see that continue, so folks will continue to come into the city, continue to support the arts, and we provide this for our residents too. I mean, how great, you just go down, go down to Main Street and see a live show, I mean, for 10 bucks, you can't go to the movies for 10 bucks. I mean, it, it's, I think, a phenomenal opportunity to bring people together and, and, and support our, our local talent here. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming, and have a nice evening.
I guess one of the hot topics is-
You want?
Is the, is the Cultural Arts Center. Tomorrow, we're going to have our second art exhibit being given by the Hackensack PTA, and schools throughout the district of Hackensack will re-bring art. Hopefully, everyone comes out tomorrow from 6:00 to 9:00. This Saturday, we're also having, we're moving our holiday, a holiday Christmas program to the Cultural Arts Center, the new one. We're having two sessions. The first session is from 9:00 to 10:30. We're going to have a magician on the first floor and Santa on the second floor. So, we are putting this building to use quickly. Registration for Hackensack youth basketball will end next Friday, registration will be taken at 39 Broadway. We also added two new programs, cheerleading for the winter and field hockey. Our senior citizen bus ride is almost sold out. The trip to the Playhouse in Pennsylvania, the bus is going to leave from the parking lot near Boulder City at 9:30. Also, next Saturday and Sunday, St. Francis is celebrating a 100-year anniversary, and we are going to open up the M&amp;M parking lot, so we can accommodate the church, Kathy Savo, your voice has been heard, we will be parking for them at this event. Thank you for coming out. Get home safe.
Leo?
The tree lighting was beautiful, really nice to see all the kids enjoying the present of Santa Claus, and we have to send everybody from the DPW, the people from the Recreation Department, they, they did a wonderful job. Last week, I have a meeting with a co-op group, and we exchanged some ideas about how to improve proper avenue, the lights, the areas that sometimes you want to cross the street in the middle of the block, and see what we can do about that. The traffic light in Beech Street, Prospect, is still in progress, you know, you guys saw the people working on it. And I still am working with the city manager to try to improve the lighting around the city, because it's too many areas that really you can't see anything, you know, sometimes you see people crossing the street, it's really dangerous. So, he's working on it with that. And the other problem that we got is speeding, and the city manager is going to work in that too. And related to the, to the resolution, everybody know that I am from Ecuador, and I support any idea how to protect the people in the city, so any meeting, anything that you guys want, you can come with me, and you just let me know, I'll be present, but I just let you know that about what, maybe eight weeks ago, we got a meeting, we, what I called the Spanish leaders of the city, and we are working to try to protect the resident, the kids, and anybody else. Thank you for coming, have a good night.
Thank you, Leo.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
I just want to talk about this Christmas tree that was lit last night. That tree, to me, I've been around, and I've rode around different towns, is one of the best trees in Bergen County. I heard some rumors last night that they want to cut it down. Hopefully, we don't cut it down, we can patch it, do whatever we got to do, but I hope and pray that that tree doesn't come down. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the tree lighting last night was well-attended, it was a great night, it was nice and warm, wasn't too cold, we've had some brutal cold nights over there. Last night was mild, and everybody had a great time. What I did notice last night is, we've always had the shuttle, and usually, the usage of the shuttle is, is minimal, it wasn't used a lot. Last night, on Main Street, that shuttle was packed up and down the street for hours, and that showed me that people are seeing things on Main Street, there, you know, things are happening down there. We had a good crowd, great to see the kids' faces. When Santa came up on the fire truck, there's a video out of that on YouTube with him coming up on the fire truck. Fire Department did a great job, and I want to thank everybody again who was involved in putting the park together, getting it ready, keeping us safe, they did a wonderful job. This morning, I attended the County Quarterly Collaborative, which is the homeless shelter along with the Sheriff's Department and different agencies, including the city, and this group of people has done a wonderful job in the City of Hackensack by working with the homeless, working with, you know, to eliminate homeless veterans in the, in Bergen County, one of the first counties in the country to eliminate veteran homelessness, and they do a wonderful, wonderful job, and kudos to them. We had a good meeting, had to leave a little early, but they're non-stop working at, at keeping people safe, keeping them off the streets. We talked this morning about what's called Code Blue, which is when the temperature reaches 32 degrees with, with precipitation, or 28 degrees without precipitation, people have to go into a shelter. It's, it's a state law, we're finding out now what our obligation is as a city, whether it falls under county rule, or whether we, we need to do it ourselves, but it's, it, it really helps take care of our less fortunate citizens. State Street, you know, heads up on that on the 26th, because it's going to, it's going to be two-way for the first time in decades, and it will be coned from one end to the other to make sure nobody crosses over. The last thing we want is any mishaps, but it's going to take a little bit of getting used to, so I ask everybody here and everybody that's watching to please be extra safe when you're on State Street. I feel that's a good week to do that. They were talking about maybe doing it a little earlier, but schools closed that week, the holiday mad rush shopping is over, so people might be, you know, more focused on driving than thinking of where the next sale might be. So, and we'll need all your focus on that when that starts. The bus ride was mentioned, we're looking, it's almost sold out, we're looking to do another bus next year for our seniors, it's a, it's a great opportunity to help the seniors in town. The heart program, I'm all in favor of that, you know, heroin addiction right now in this country, especially in, in Jersey and in North Jersey in particular, because of the opioid epidemic, these young kids get hooked up on painkillers and opioids, and the next thing they know, they can't find them or buy them, and they're, you know, they're out there- there buying heroin as a substitute, and there's not very many happy endings come out of that story, so anything we can do to help that, we will participate in. Fair and welcoming community, absolutely, 100% behind it, as is everybody on this council, we will move forward with this. Our police department does a wonderful job, and as you know, we follow, we have strict Attorney General guideline rules, which our police department follows, and under those rules, they are not to even ask the question, "Are you here illegally?", that's not part of their job, all right? They're not ICE agents, the last thing that's ever going to happen in the city is for ICE to come in and take over our police department, we need our cops to do our work, not their work, so I wouldn't worry too much about that. But that said, I agree 100%, where is, I'm trying to think of a young lady's name, would you go?
God?
No, 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 no. Anyway, diversity is our strength, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, thank you. I've been saying that forever, I think everybody in Hackensack, that's one of our favorite key words, key sayings, our diversity is our strength, you know, so many of us could have raised our children or raised our families somewhere else, we chose to stay here, and we like it here, and we like it the way it is, and we like the fact that, you know, there's all different cultures here. Ate with the food thing, that's a great analogy, you know, I ate last night in an Argentinean restaurant, one of the best ones around, and we have some great, just, you name it, we have Indian, we have Arabian, we have, you know, all the different, different culture restaurants, it's great, really, you know, and it's only going to get better as downtown develops, but, but that said, that's just, that's the good part of having diversity here, and there's a lot of good things that come with it, and I'm 100% behind making everybody feel welcome and unafraid in our community, that's the way it should be. So, I will work with the city manager, the man has been very busy, I know it's tough to hear that, but he's without his executive secretary, she's been out on maternity leave, we weren't able to replace her, he's working an insane amount of hours, and he lives an hour away from here besides, so, but, his second-hand person will be back next week?
Monday.
Monday, and I know he'll be happy, and he'll be able to free him up, and we'll get him on this, I promise you that. The Abel Gonzalez thing, I will try to attend, it's Thursday night?
Yes.
Thursday, I will try to make it, if not, I will definitely make sure that some funds go that way for myself. That's Thursday evening. Teterboro, great job, deputy mayor and the citizens of Hackensack, the co-op and condo board, everybody involved. You know, the fact that, it's a key point here, the fact that Mrs. Canestrino has a background in aerospace engineering, definitely had a little bit to do with us getting this accomplished, or her getting this accomplished, and it was a big plus, because for those of you who sat here at the FAA meeting when they were here, they, you know, she had them at every turn, and it was actually enjoyable to sit here and watch it, because they kind of had egg on their face when she was done, but great job, and we're looking for relief in the next, you know, year or so from that, and some of the planes lately, you know, somebody told me the other day, they saw the biggest plane they ever saw coming down into Teterboro. Stephanie, I mean, they're huge, they're just, it seems like they're getting bigger all of a sudden. I'm going to speak a little bit to the Arts Center again, and, and I'll make an example of the tree lighting last night, you know, we don't make any money off the tree lighting, we're not meant to make any money off the tree lighting. The tree lighting is for the citizens of this city and other cities, if they want to come, to enjoy. My grandkids come from other towns, it's, it's, it's an event, and it's a happy event, it's a great event, the summer concerts, we don't charge for the summer concerts, right? These are things we do, and we bring, you know, if you bring 1,000 people down to the green to see a show, and 50 of them go to local merchants and restaurants, you're doing your job, right? We're doing our job, we're supporting our local businesses, they're supporting our local businesses, and we're entertaining people, and their people are having a good time in Hackensack, and that's, that's what we want to see. Does it cost money? Yes, absolutely. Everything costs money, baseball, football, cultural arts, it all costs money. But, perfect example is tomorrow night is the art show for the high school kids, right? That's tomorrow night?
All kids.
All kids.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're using a new, a new center, and with the PTA came to us and said, we said, "Absolutely, you should use this building, that's what it's for," it's, you know, and we want to partner up. I know there's also discussion about high school plays, am I right, Kasim?
The spring show will be at the-
The spring show will not be at the high school, it will be in the, in the new state-of-the-art Cultural Arts Center, which is a great thrill and a great experience for the kids that are performing, because they're in a, you know, the high school auditorium is the high school auditorium, but this is a venue designed for these people to perform in, so it's, it's really special for them. So these are special things, so this building is going to be just fine, I have no worries about it. As far as me, me doing this building so I can get kudos, this building's been going on for a long, 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 long time, and, you know, everybody in the city should be happy and getting kudos for it opening up as it did. And I think that's all I have today, I want to thank everybody from the Main Street Alliance who came and spoke out, you know, we have a great partnership, and again, I'll say it again, without them, that building did not open as it did, we wouldn't have had the funding. So, the money went the other way, not the way it was unfortunately represented before, which was not true. So with that, I want to, motion to close?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Everybody have a safe trip home, thank you.